So we do have a presentation that is a little long, but it does provide overview of everything. So.
Uh, yeah, sorry.
Mike, you want to go over the state of the current equipment real quick while we're setting up the presentation?
Yes, so the Snowcat I believe from nineteen ninety-seven.
Okay.
It was purchased with donated funds that were collected from the community. And all I know is that Roddenbridge wanted to pick it up and felt like that belief. I do know we did have to replace one of the wheels this year because it fell apart.
Okay.
A lot of bases fell apart and they don't make that part anymore, so we have to use the next thing that they replaced that with. So it was like four thousand dollars for one cutter. And it's got twelve of them.
Wow. So is there a lifespan estimate on that machine?
Um, passed.
Yeah, yesterday. Well passed. Has that been part of the problem this year?
Bad snow. Snow, yeah, snow sets.
Well, it doesn't suck. There's been plenty of snow on the weekend. We've been.
Today.
Yeah. Well, that would be the point of having lightweight machines to touch it up when there isn't to this snow. You ready, Tim?
I'm ready to hear anything, sure.
Yeah, so I put together just a high overview of twenty twenty-four and how we got to where we are today. So in February of twenty-four, our former pros director had identified the need to do a county-wide grooming operations plan, just so that we can get all the people in the room together and start having discussions about how we collaborate, how we make these plans, and how we move forward heading into winter twenty-four, twenty-five. We've been having ongoing conversations at that time with the Leadville Cross Country Ski Council co-chairs. So there were two co-chairs on that board at the time. And they were supportive of moving the operations at the golf course over to countywide apps. The following month, we held our first grooming meeting that had representation from pros, public works, Cloud City Wheelers, CMC's Skier Operations Team, and the Leadville Cross Country Ski Council. So out of that discussion, we determined we needed to have more discussions. We needed to talk more and continue having these meetings and chatting. Ultimately, the group consensus was that for all grooming operations in the county, we needed to have a standard minimum base of three to five inches of packed snow or twelve to eighteen inches of loose snow, depending on the location, before we could really put any kind of equipment and machinery on. And that's depending on, you know, the base underneath. So is it asphalt of the mineral belt? Is it golf infrastructure of the golf course? To be sensitive to whatever ground is underneath that snow. And then also taking into consideration what machinery is actually on top. So does it have metal crossers or rubber crossers? There's a little bit of flexibility here, just depending on what. Heading into April, we had our second grooming meeting with the same representation. We talked about what kind of budget the county currently had between pros and public works to help try to support some of this work. We looked at the need to do an equipment inventory across all of our partners and programs, making a wish list of, you know, what would be, you know, no limitations on finances or anything. What are the high-level options that we could do here? We identified the need to look at fundraising opportunities, right? So like, we know we can't cover the or foot the bill entirely from any one organization. So that's why this collaboration is super important. We talked a lot about signage priorities too around the mineral belt trail, trying to adapt and make some improvements on deteriorating sites, things that are out there that have some damage, et cetera. And then at the end of the April month, the Cross Country Ski Council, which was an independent nonprofit, their board decided that they would dissolve at the conclusion of that season, their work-related operations. Heading into the summer, in June, we had our first connection with Nordic Pulse, which is the platform that we're using now. That was, I believe it was a suggestion from either the March or April meeting to start looking at some other platforms we could use to centralize communication and really get grooming standards out to the community in more of a concise way. Into June, or into July, excuse me, we had our third grooming meeting. Here, we discussed narrowing down equipment costs, really trying to find what's realistic for fundraising, both in terms of what we needed to look at for dollars, but also what opportunities we could explore, whether that's like community fundraising or looking for private donors, things like that. And then how do we keep pickles up in the mineral belt trail? That's a constant conversation and that came up in that meeting as well. Heading into, you know, the drier months of the summer, trying to plan in advance for the seventh and eighth. Into the fall, we began working officially with Nordic Pulse. So a lot of that base work was looking at developing our mapping system so that it can integrate seamlessly into their platform. That looked at everything with acreage miles, trail means, trail difficulty, things like that. Just the groundwork to get that platform set and ready for the upcoming winter. And we started working through collecting quotes and costs from some of our vendors and suppliers in the area, looking at availability. So what could we potentially get heading into the twenty-four, twenty-five winter that we didn't have in terms of equipment? Into November, we had our fourth grooming meeting. We determined that the direction of purchasing a UTV side-by-side and using the already-owned Ginsu pull behind implement was our best option at the moment for longer-term costing things down at the golf course. And then we start working through that procurement process. And then as far as, again, this is really just county-specific, we've been looking at the public works, Snowcat. Eddie felt really comfortable that he'd be able to get this thing through at least one more season. One more season of life out of it before we really needed to look at purchasing another piece of equipment.
Thank you, Eddie.
So looking a little bit into the scope of work, we can talk about each of our, you know, individual entities right now that are partnering to help lead grooming in our community. I do want to mention that we didn't include Tennessee Pass Nordic Center on this presentation because they're a paid opportunity. And so the ones we're going to highlight in this presentation are just our free amenities. It's certainly not exhaustive. And we have been talking with Tennessee Pass about potentially adding their programs and grooming schedule onto the Nordic Pulse platform. I think Ty is human in here too, so if he gives some feedback.
I'll use the words in.
Cool. So when we look at non-motorized trails, what we really have is the mineral belt, the golf course, the Timberline Trails, which is the single-track trail system out at the college, and then our CMC Student Lab Trails. And then with motorized trails, which also have some non-motorized benefit, I recognize that. But for motorized specifically, that's pretty much exclusively managed by the High Riders Snowmobile Club. And Ross can speak more to this, but we're looking at the Eastside Mining District and Turquoise Trail. Okay. Alright, so this is a screenshot of what you'll see when you visit Nordic Pulse. This is the desktop version, so it looks a little different when you pull it up on the mobile app. This is a great visual for when you have a variety of last groomed trails out on our system. So the key on the left-hand side there dictates, you know, was it groomed in the last twelve hours? Was it groomed in the last twenty-four hours? The last four to seven days, last fourteen-plus days? So each color gives you a different, you know, information about last grooming on trails. I think this one's great because they're all, each of the sections, each of the trail systems is a different color. It happens to be on this particular screenshot, so you can kind of see there's a lot of overlap on our trail systems. But what we've done with Nordic Pulse is separate them out into four different ski areas so that they can be tracked separately because they ultimately serve slightly different user groups and they're groomed by different groups. And they're also groomed with different equipment. So giving curated grooming reports and updates per ski area really gives you a clearer picture about what each area looks like. So this is kind of the landing page for all of the Leadville groomed trails. And from here, you can go into each of these trail systems a little bit further to get more information. So zooming in a little bit, this is the Mount Massive Golf Course Trail System. This is groomed by Parks Rec Open Space. And currently, this is groomed with RV TV and Ginsu pull behind implement. So on the bottom right here, you can see the trails split out. You can see the distance, you can see if they're dog-friendly. Since this is a screenshot, sign or active, but when you go into each of those trails, it'll highlight, you know, your elevation gain over the course of that trail and typically what kind of skiing is supported. So is there, is it classic-supported, meaning there's a classic track set? Are bikes allowed, things like that? And then again, it kind of gives you that high-level, when was it last groomed, information. There's a video here, Tim, if you could hit play on that. So that is our thing. Yeah. That's our UTV in motion, in the parking lot, doing a turnaround. So it is enclosed, it's great, it's got heat. It's a lot more comfortable for a groomer rather than, you know, being out in a snowmobile, which is how we were doing it in advance to having the UTV for the season. And there's the Ginsu groomer, so it's attached via like a hitch, a panel hitch operation. That piece that's kind of sitting there up in the air, that's our track setter. So when we're, you know, when we're done a few passes to get a good base and we're ready to set that, we just drop that down and do a first set. So that's a golf course, golf course equipment. And then we look at Public Works. So one of the things that we had decided in, over the course of these groomer meetings was that to support our CMC students and getting more cat hours, we would split the mineral belt trail in half. And so Public Works and in our Snowcat rooms, the highlighted blue section of that overarching orange outline, the mineral belt trail. They pretty much start from just above the word Leadville at the Public Works yard, the shop there. They go out to Cow Gulch, turn around, come back, go down, out to Dutch Henry, and then come back. So it gets two passes and that's all Eddie's handiwork. So Eddie, if there's anything specific you want to add to that about your route or the trail conditions? Okay. And then here's a nice video of Eddie in action. So you can see it's a pretty different piece of equipment, right? So, you say seventies, eighty-seventies?
No! Ninety-seven.
Sorry, I was a wee baby in the nineties, so. So that Snowcat does have rubber browsers, the tracks there, they're rubber. So we are able to have a little bit more flexibility with when that can go out as far as what's underneath of it and avoiding any damage to the asphalt of the mineral belt trail.
One note to that, we did have to steal a browser too.
Okay, good to know, so we could swap those out potentially. So looking over to the other portion of the mineral belt trail, we have partnered again with the ski area operations students and faculty to encourage more trading hours in Snowcats for the students. So this is a great way for them to integrate into their already-existing trail system that they offer, since there is a lot of overlap and intersection with the mineral belt trail. Next slide, please. So part two is, again, it's a little tough to see visually, Nordic Pulse with overlapping trails can be a little difficult. But the highlighted orange and red sections here is the student lab trails. And we've decided to call it that because, and Ben, if you want to speak a little more to this, there's some legality and liability challenges of giving the trails actual fun names. So just call them student lab trails. Because ultimately, what they are is a living lab classroom for the SAO students to get out and operate the machines, learn how to become professional groomers. And then we just happened to get a great benefit out of that for some free trails. Cloud City Wheelers is our next partner, so Sterling and a couple of his volunteers go out and groom the single-track trails that are highlighted here in red and orange. The black is mineral belt and the student lab trails. So there's a handful of, you know, offerings and opportunities here as well. And again, because this is more single-track oriented based on the equipment that CMC is using, or rather, I'm sorry, the Cloud City Wheelers is using, we didn't feel like it was appropriate to separate these out into a separate section. The next slide, we've got some photos, we can talk about them. So this is the, you've listed.
This is just a few examples. We, the Cloud City Wheelers, we groom twenty-point-one-three miles of trail, which is open to any non-motorized user. We groom with a snowmobile, pulling that small Ginsu groomer, which is thirty inches wide. We also have a snowdog machine, which is a snowmobile without skis. It's very physical and, yeah, I'm looking forward to doing it today. But we groom the narrow, some narrower trails with that machine. And it takes roughly around nine hours total to groom twenty-point-one-three miles of trail.
For reference to the golf course trails right now are about an hour and a half, all said and done with two passes and then any amount of.
I can do it without paying attention, I can do it in two and a half hours, but we take about three.
Connect, connect the dots.
Just for some timing reference here. Here is a map from the High Riders Snowmobile Club. Ross, if you want to talk a little bit about your operations, I've got two maps that you're for you.
So where we're at, the line that's the blue at the bottom, that kind of goes west and east. We're not able to really fulfill that obligation due to like condition of the county road. We wouldn't like to have funding for it. Actually, we're going to lose funding if we don't come up with something. We're offered, you'd like, we have an idea where we'd like to go and work out. Either with a donation to the county, to the college or the county for a little funding, but keep in mind, that has to be remaining motorized or money isn't allocated. In the county, I just appreciate everybody supporting us in the county a lot of the years with helping us maintain access. Our grant program is based upon loops. We don't get paid for down now. So the county's really supported us to keep access in the area and kind of like do some more. And that's kind of what goes on in the mining district, there's not a lot of trees and it's rocks. So we're a little usually later, we get a lot of sun, so we're usually starting a little later. We're all volunteers and, you know, I just think it's great that the county did what they did to bring grooming in-house and keeping our funds in the county, offering opportunities instead of going out of state on state snow cats, which is really true. So I'm pretty happy. I really appreciate that you, there's ability to promote users to go somewhere else. I think if we lost any additional miles, you know, users would want to go on something that maybe was non-motorized. They look at other issues in the state, in the rural law, that we have opportunities for multiple trailheads. I believe in sign language and education. And, you know, kind of have some ideas. I mean, even, you know, as more people come to Leadville that they're aware where to go, maybe you can stage something where trailers and trucks go. And so we're not comparing like, you know, Roddenbridge, you know, Poggi or what have you. But that's kind of the short of it. We've made a lot of progress. I would say we're not really super sustainable. But I think we've kind of overcome that hurdle this past year. And so from our point of view, with what we operate, it's not really the years on our Snowcats, it's hours on the Snowcats when they're kind of like, have succeeded their fulfillment of duty, which is roughly around like thirteen hours. Then it just becomes more just parts and labor to maintain them. We're more than happy to offer up, like Colorado Snowmobility Association has like about forty-three Snowcats in their fleet. They're always looking to work out Snowcats, so we're not happy to share there. Like I mentioned, Two-Track Mine, Stan Witschneck, he's a, I think somebody you want to partner with there. If you had a cat purchased from him, he'd be a good guy, stand behind his stuff. And there's another one or two people, I'm not so sure that I would recommend. I have great partnerships at Piston Bully and Prenup. We hold a grooming clinic for all the operators. Anybody's welcome to come. We hold them in Grand Junction once a year, every other year at their location, it's just a grooming clinic. Cover safety topics and things like that. And so, yeah, there's just some opportunity I see and we'd love to contribute more. But if we don't pick up and groom those extra miles one way or another, we're going to lose some funding, but we'll uphold our obligation currently, what we kind of do in the mining district.
You say there's a problem with the road itself?
In the mining district?
Yeah.
Yes, so you see that black line that goes from like the red circle down to the blue? And just below that, that little access point keeps us from grooming everything like towards the landfill a little bit. It's just not, it just beats up the cat and blade and.
Because it's boulders or?
Pardon me?
Boulders and rocks?
Yeah, it just got really narrow, slough off and what have you. We've paid and worked with Roddenbridge and others to continue that one-day circle so we can keep our funding. But that one's a little bit out of our scope per se. So we've got kind of like a vision, you know, I've shared in the fall, I was invited to one meeting and hopefully we can groom what I think we can one way or another.
Yeah, that's great.
We would buy the older one Snowcat and leave it out where I'd like to groom. My vision would be to groom a loop kind of by the landfill, down by the dirt bike track and out. And then that would remain motorized, that's how we get our funding. But I would like to see a non-rental operation on it for everybody to not worry, you know? Be less traffic, less volume, less usage, safer for everybody that's in it. But that's down the road, but that's what's kind of going on in the mining district.
Awesome, Ross, thank you. Do we get help from White Mountain Tours out at Turquoise Lake? Do they do some grooming out there?
So in the world of contributions, not deal a lot of this in the state. Because who actually grooms and picks up like workings, house, fuel, maintenance, and actual grooming with the appropriate Snowcat contributes the most. Second is actual cash that somebody might contribute, which is not quite the same gold standard. And your less standard is somebody that does like in-kind contribution, probably sign work or what have you. So, so let's say on topic with the lake. So right now, White Mountain Tour, Elk Mountain Tours, is that the one you asked or White?
No, White Mountain.
So White Mountain is the gold standard. They contribute quite a bit. They use it immensely, a quarter of the section, but they run a Snowcat with a drag. And they don't blade a ton and that's okay, we're good at that. And their browsers are wider than their drag, so there's always those little ripples everywhere. So we try to clean that up. Great partnership, things are great. If you groom too much, you'll see where they go and you have to go over. It wears out the snow. And then when there's asphalt underneath, it's the first thing to deteriorate and go away. Elk Mountain Tours doesn't do any, and then they park their trailer at the dam. They're no longer keeping their stage and their snowmobiles there. I don't see a truck or a transfer tank anywhere. So things have improved a little bit. They have the same VR three-fifty as we are, that's way more. But, you know, I think we're just okay with the way things are. I would prefer, I don't know how everybody else feels, I'd prefer they shuttle in their guests, like White Mountain used to do at Leadville Junction before COVID. I think that would alleviate a lot of parking. I think that's the only thing that's kind of left.
Okay, parking at the junction?
No, parking at the dam.
Oh, at the dam.
Because they run out of the dam, they steer clear of White Mountain.
Okay.
And then White Mountain now just goes to the prime, supposedly.
Yeah, yeah.
And they have to, obviously, the way this works is we hold a five-year National Forest permit and that's how we're able to do programs in Canada. So technically, they have to stay on the county road. But us, and I believe White Mountain has a permit to go out and do other grooming and, you know, anytime you make money in National Forest land, you have to have a permit.
Ross, I'm going to connect with you again later about some of that stuff. If after this, if we can chat over.
And then, and then just to kind of fill in about the lake, we run out, it took us three different tillers to find the right width of tiller. We found one that pretty much is everything, we still have to allocate a second Snowcat just to do safety. This is so narrow. Yeah, it's working.
You're funded off just donations from?
No, we're funded by Colorado Parks Wildlife and Colorado Snowmobility Association through a grant program. So when everybody buys a motorized sticker for, you can buy one for a bike if you want to contribute. But so there's a whole grant process, takes place twice a year, that's how we get our funding. There's a capital grant for equipment repairs. The grant cycle just to receive funding, it's based upon mileage, which is kind of at stake for the county because we're not fulfilling our agreement. We're grooming the hours, but we're not grooming where we're supposed to be. And that's not okay with us, based on usage matrix. And if anybody's ever interested in that, wants to come through an all-day meeting to see how the program works, you're welcome. White Mountain would be my guest.
Hey Ross, one point clarification, you said the Snowcats, I think you misspoke, you said thirteen hours.
Thirteen thousand hours.
Thirteen thousand?
Your cat is kind of done. So that's what cat, that's based upon like, like the tire thing, there's certain kind of workarounds. You can do like a foam tire, an air tire, a hard steel rim. There's, you know, it's just little things that just chip away over time.
Yeah.
Like eats your, it gets, eats your budget off.
Yeah. So would you say it'd be good to stick with one brand then, if you're going to have multiple?
No, it comes down to like, it comes down to what I say, it's not a pre-nout there, Piston Bully. Well, so first off, with the side-by-side, the pounds per square inch, it's actually a lighter thing that you guys, you know, kind of purchase. But the pounds per square inch may not let you get as far as you want through the spring. You kind of think, that's why we have the crews in the mining district from the one rental company. So that's, and then when it comes to the brand, we, in our world of the club, we just deal with Piston Bully and Prenup. They're both fine and it kind of comes down to your inspection. So like, it's well worth it to hire somebody, go check some strand pumps and go through. You actually kind of want to use it. If you buy from Prenup or Piston Bully, it's not the day you purchase, if you get a warranty from. It's the day that you start using your cat, and if you have a partnership, they'll let you do that. But it's really on the onus of the purchaser, I would. And so, and the reason why things are just gotten out of hand is because new Snowcats, we mainly get our Snowcats from resorts. They now have like a snowset system, so they know when a cat is actually idling and actually working. They're actually using the cats to their full ability. Before you could buy a ten-thousand-hour cat that only had five thousand hours, you walked away with a sweet deal. And the other thing that blew up the cost of these Snowcats is the tier-four emissions. And now everybody holds on to this, it's so expensive to have a piece of that. So it's very, very expensive to get a cat under five thousand hours now, or six thousand hours. It's kind of almost better to find a sweet spot, you know, somewhere between two thousand, if you can capture one. Sorry, and you can always talk more.
Yeah, thank you, Ross. I'm worried that we're going to run out of time because we only have a short amount of time here. I know, would some of you like to talk, would some of you like to comment publicly?
I just want to say our cat has five thousand, two hundred?
Okay.
Two hundred and seventy-three hours on it. That cat's, to me, he's got a lot of life, he's just had a lot of.
I see, that's the yellow bombardier that we were seeing in the pictures?
Okay.
I remember one of those were the hot stuff. Didn't seem to live that long again.
Is that a VR one-eighty?
It's a four-hundred.
VR four-hundred?
VR four-hundred, they all market.
Can we think of the next step? There's some, there's some cost breakdown too. I'm happy to send this over to you if you can figure it out.
Yeah, sure, if you just want to run through it real quick.
Yeah, so when you look at the UTV Ginsu setup, you're looking at thirty-six thousand for the UTV and anywhere from eight to thirteen for the pull behind implement. If, this is if we were to like, need to fully replace something tomorrow, right? Public Works, our Snowcat, anywhere from eighty to two-forty K, it really depends on if you buy something used or new. That's kind of across the board for all Snowcats, so just stick with that figure. And then we do also have a wide-track snowmobile that we were using early season. We inherited that from a search and rescue team, but brand-new, those are about ten to fifteen K. You would have to replace? CMC has two Snowcats and three wide-track snowmobiles. Two, right? CMC has two snowcats and three wide track snowmobiles, um, two, right? Do you see them? Yes. Uh, so again, about two forty each for those. Those are much newer, much bigger, much beefier. Um, so again, kind of same figures for those. They also own a roller, uh, which is a pull behind implement. It's a retrofitted culvert on a, on a hitch. So you can basically go early season and do some prep. Um, so the thing to remember about, about snow and early season and even as we're going is the snow science component. Making sure that you're not gonna air out of that snow, letting it sit and firm up so that you can then continue to build on that and create more of a base throughout the season as you go. Uh, they also own a snowmaster, which is a, a smaller shortened condensed version of, of the Ginsu. It's a much simpler, straight, more straightforward implement, no electrical, um, activity on that at all or hookups. And those were in about six grand. We've been using both of those implements, um, at the golf course this season. So, um, that partnership has been super helpful. Glad City Wheelers has again, a, a similar wide track snowmobile that we also were, um, kind enough, kind enough to offer to help us early season, help with some prep. Um, their snowdog, maybe about six thousand dollars for a, a replacement of that and then the.
It's our Ginsu groomer, our thirty inch white groom.
Yeah, so about five grand for that. So, and then High Riders, when you're looking at three snowcats, they get anywhere from a hundred to forty K for replacement costs. So when you're looking big picture, like this is a lot of cash, um, that's required for not only purchasing the equipment, but the upkeep and maintenance. If you go to the next slide, we've got a little info there on some personnel, um, just for a high-level idea. Pros, we have, um, two groomer positions technically staffed. They're currently staffed by one CMC student. So we, we partner with CMC to hire one of their SAO in-training groomers to run the snowcat on Dutch Henry. Um, that's about six hundred bucks a year for that personal cost. And then, uh, at the golf course.
That's for the tubing?
For the, sorry, for the, yep, for the tubing hill. Um, and then at the golf course, that same individual we have on payroll to help us out. Right now, we're probably estimating about forty-five hours for the, for the season for that individual helping over there. Public Works, Eddie is an operator first and foremost, but he is incredible with the grooming as well. So huge shout out to him. He's our only other groomer on staff who's certified on snowcats and specifically that is snowcat. So be able to run that. Sterling for about fifteen hundred dollars with the sixty-one hours, um, over the season. Glad City Wheelers relies on volunteer hours primarily and then of course Sterling and his time to, to get out there. So eighty-six hours as of this week, um, already in volunteer hours out there. And then about thirty-six hours of prep time early season, which is huge and super important for us. Um, and then here's some, some, um, information from Ross as well. So they have about a hundred and thirty-five hours based on grooming, um, fifty-two for admin. And then anywhere from twenty-four to fifty hours, depending on the kind of labor service that they're having to, you know, operate on, on their equipment. Some operational costs again, really high level here, but you're looking at fuel usage and scheduled maintenance. And some of these figures we don't have yet, right? UTV, I have no idea how many gallons we're gonna end up using on that thing over the course of the season. Um, so we'll have a little more detail for, for you at the end of the season. Um, our Nordic Pulse subscription right now at the current size, uh, of the map system is a thousand dollars for the year. Um, process with the bill for that. Um, happy to grow that and look at what that cost will be with more partners. Um, you know, fuel incidentals, like Michael was mentioning about having to replace that wheel on our snowcat is about two grand. There's six wheels total that, you know, that, that same issue could potentially happen with, so it's, it's not nothing, right? Um, we don't have the figures from CMC, but again, since they're private, um, their funding comes from a little bit of a different source. And then, uh, Glad City Wheelers mostly relying on grant funds and donations to, to kind of support that for them. Um, same thing with High Riders. So you've got, you know, some information here. It really depends on the equipment. It depends on the hours of the machine, um, the spaces that we are grooming. But I just thought having a little bit of this info could kind of put some of these numbers into perspective. You know, we have free amenities here and we do a really good job, uh, trying to, trying to work with what we have, uh, but it does cost, right? This is just some future discussion opportunities. I think, um, pretty much what we're talking about here is discussions we're already having. So I think this is a, a good time to open it up for other folks to offer comment.
And I guess, you know, just some comment from me would be, we've got options, right? But one of the status quo, you don't change the way we're doing things. I'm not sure that's, that's the way we, we wanna go. Obviously we can increase, increase our capacity here at the county. That's gonna cost in terms of placement of groomer or staff, things like that. We obviously can contract out operations. That's a viable option, although it's our preferred option, we'll talk through. Uh, again, expanding our, our service, moving into, you know, category for other things like that. And again, is looking at the golf course and is there an opportunity to change that to a more Nordic center type operation? Debate, uh, and again, growing our, our tools, right? So we've invested in Nordic Pulse. It's got some traction. It's an opportunity to go, how that's used, why that's used, you know? Um, so yeah, so happy to open it up to comment and discussion. Thanks Jane to Paul or whoever.
Yeah, thank you Jane. Appreciate it.
Yeah.
Should we open it up to public comment? Does anybody have any public comment? Quick, you know, keep it short and simple and polite?
I could have something to say. We travel around the state and to do Nordic skiing. And this year I've heard from several people, just Serpentine Boat, Slide, Univista. What happened to the golf course? Really? Cause they were coming here and spending their money and, uh, they just aren't anymore. And I think that's something to really look at. I know it looks like a cost, but they also brought a lot of people here. And you know, when they were, you know, grooming at the golf course, people go, oh, where should we go eat in town? What should we go do in town? And, uh, we certainly, we weren't there very much this year, but we certainly go here that year. And so I think that's a, a thing to look at. It really has to look at.
I agree. Would you agree, Adam?
Sure would.
Anything you wanna say about economic development as it relates to, uh, Nordic skiing and, and, and the snowmobile cloud and the cycling?
Yeah, sure. Um, I mean, at the end of the day, uh, our largest growth potential in our largest area of where we could be seeing a lot more influx of, um, lodging tax specifically and then as well as just commercial sales taxes our winter season. You know, our summer season from about mid-June to through mid-September is pretty healthy. And, um, at the end of the day, we really don't have any spikes from about, other than Christmas itself. From about December until, um, April. And then once the day ski cooper closes, um, we fall off a cliff. So, um, I am investing heavily in, um, leaning into a brand new strategy or a renovated strategy of leaning into all of the access we have to winter assets. Um, and I can only do that if we have assets. So for me, I can hope people here are talking about the fact that we are a world-class back biking destination. Um, and that we have access to ski cooper and copper. Um, and I certainly cherish the opportunity to be able to speak, um, full-throatedly about our access to world-class Nordic operations. Um, but I am very hesitant to, um, overpromise and underdeliver. So at the end of the day, it's very important, very cautious. We've been burned a few different times in a few different ways of trying to promote things that, um, don't have consistency in this community.
Hey Don?
Basically, um, it has great potential. And it's been Nordic skiing for Gladville has been here and kids excelling since seventy-six. And I cut those college trails and it's getting less and less because of the abuse. And, um, CMC did a super job this year. And, um, the other thing, um, we're only gonna see more people cross skiing because of the price of lift tickets. Everyone up yesterday. So, and the other thing, we need to respect these kids. We, I've had ten national champions. People don't know that. Right here in Gladville and we're getting crap done.
I, um, I used to come here for a ski boat to, just to have something different to ski on. And, um, I hate to point fingers, but it's just, I call it multi-abuse, not multi-use. Because people don't respect other users. And I, I've been trying for years to just to consider, to put this in people's mind of having some segregated trails. Because just because they're segregated doesn't mean they're not, they're not multi-use. Look at Rabbiters Pass. There's a snowmobile side and there's a skater side. Look at Bale Pass. There's a snowmobile side and there's a skater side. Uh, Cloud City's putting over twenty miles of trails. So they have county roads, they have single track, they've got Eastside, Turquoise Lake. I just think we should try to have some dedicated ski trails, like the south side of the Mineral Belt and, and college trails. And encourage snowshoers, runners, bikers to use, or a lot of dog walkers too, that'll just walk up right down the trail. Just use some single track, maybe have some exclusive ski tracks. Thank you.
Along those same lines, um, we were at the golf course, we were out there twice this year just to see what was like. One time we were out there, we were coming to the parking lot and there was a group of people that were heading down the foot. And I just mentioned to them, you know, they, this isn't open to walkers. And we said, well, I don't see a sign. And I said, it's on their website, but they really didn't care. There was no sign there, so they were gonna just go walking. And a group of about ten of them went walking, put deep footprints in because the snow was soft. And so, you know, it's one thing to say something, but if you don't have signage, it's, it's not that good. That, that's a huge issue. You know, the other thing is when the dogs are on the trails, people need to clean up after them. Years ago, I was skate skiing just below Dutch Henry. There was a little bit of new snow. There was some dog crap just underneath that bit of new snow. My ski hit it and just stopped. I flew toward my rotator cuff and that was the end of the season. And so somehow too, that'd give people to, to clean up after the dogs. A lot of times when we're out on the Mineral Belt, that's what we do. We ski ways, clean up some dog, we ski ways, clean up some dog. And so, uh, it's really dangerous. And also when people walk on it, the skiing can get very, very dangerous if you're skiing. Also, uh, it's important to set classic track. A lot of people, they're willing to see some classic track. I haven't, you know, the times we've been going to the golf course, I haven't seen any set there this year. So I don't know, like, uh, there's plenty of snow. When we groomed there, we set the classic track all from mid-December through April. And, uh, you can deal with a little bit of snow energy.
Thank you, John.
I think for us, if I can say, um, for the Nordic Center, um, you know, the, the Mineral Belt Trail obviously is a great asset to the community and have it right here in town. I think for us running a business and to try to have to compete with the county operating a Nordic Center at the golf course is gonna be really difficult, be hard on our business. Um, definitely kind of not in favor of that and it's already a little much the golf course as well. When the golf course wasn't being groomed earlier this year, we saw quite a few folks that we had not seen in the past come in and get a season pass because the golf course was not being groomed. Again, the Mineral Belt Trail around town, like I totally support it. It's, it's right here and what the wheelers do with the bike, um, back bike trails and everything is fantastic. But it is a little hard, you know, if I have to try to compete with grant money and everybody's getting grants with snowcats. Like, I can't do that. I have to pay for everything. I have to pay for all my fuel. You know, and that does become a little bit of a struggle as a business over here in town. In fact, you, you know, my thirty-four employees employed in the, in the winter. So it is definitely a concern and something I think the county should really consider. You know, the impacts on private business like myself. And I know that we're, you know, lifted out of town and I understand that so is the golf course. And like I said, the Mineral Belt Trail and what's going on in town is different. But the golf course operating as a Nordic Center, you know, um, would really feel like pretty unfair competition. You know, that I would struggle to compete with, um, especially as a county entity. You know, that'd be, be pretty hard and I'm sure you would agree. It's not exactly fair to private business for me to have to try to compete with those sort of, you know, what? Grant monies and, you know, those sort of things. It's, it's hard enough as it is, you know, at times. And the grooming does cost us a lot of money. We do spend a lot of money in fuel and maintenance and, and maintaining everything. And I have a couple groomers and we, we groom, you know, pretty much, you know, five to seven days a week, depending on the conditions. And, you know, over the course of the season, those dollars add up a lot just to maintain our trails.
Yeah, and from a visitation standpoint, as a point, point of reference, we pretty much only exclusively mention, um, Tennessee Pass now. Um, we used to sort of lay out options for people, but just for consistency and so that they can have a good experience and so that they can spend their money in town. We pretty much only bring up Tennessee Pass.
Thank you Ty. Your grooming's awesome.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Consistent and we can always count on you. So thank you very much. That's something that I hadn't considered, but, uh, that's worth considering. If we're looking at the, you know, from a little bit of an outsider perspective, looking at the whole picture here, we've got, it almost feels like we've got too much for what we can take care of as far as these trails. Like if things are, if the Mineral Belt's not being groomed enough or if people don't feel like the golf course has been kept up to standards. What is the biggest drawbacks that you guys think about consolidating and picking one or the other to really focus on? To offer a consistent quality product that could be marketable? I'm thinking the Mineral Belt cause, you know, we're kind of already, um, hearing some problems with, you know, someone who employs three dozen locals having, you know, to compete with a county entity, uh, seems a little counterproductive to me. But, you know, if, if, what would, what would you guys think would be the biggest drawbacks to consolidating our skiing to focus on the Mineral Belt? What do you think, Smokey?
I think the golf course caters to a certain population, older folks, beginners. Um, so it does service that population. Um, but I do agree with Ty that I don't think it should be set up as a Nordic Center. Um, because that puts, you know, on cycles of life, Alpine Skiing Sports at a disadvantage if you're renting skis, doing lessons there. So I feel like maintaining it, um, would be, would be a good service for that population. But I don't support being a Nordic service type place. Um, but if we have to focus on one entity over the other, I would prefer the Mineral Belt. Cause that does bring more people into town. They're here in town. Whereas like the golf course, they would come into town, but they don't necessarily have to. I ski the golf course a lot cause I live south of town and I can ski it without having to come to town on my day off. So, um, so I do support continuing usage of the golf course. But if we can't maintain all, I would prefer to focus on the Mineral Belt.
And I would just like to add to optics to some people where there's motorized and non-motorized areas. And when somebody looks at funding or asks us a question, it was, you know, the High Rider is the non-motorized. And, and the county contributes money to the Mineral Belt. So it was kind of strange. Some people kind of had thought, well, they just picked up and gave more funding for the golf course. Now they're grooming two different locations. But now, but the county doesn't give a dime to, not, not on a negative like, there's no contribution of money to the High Riders. Spun Mobile Club. So that's kind of strange to some of the motorized people. There is this like workaround that, that motorized will contribute to this program. There is this like workaround that, that motorized will contribute to this program, like through the rentalers, but it's still not accounting, helping out in some in-kind or funding. It's just that optics, just throwing it out there, I'm not really for or against the, you know, the golf course. But the optics was weird, and that happened for the first year or so. And the one lady said it is phenomenal to stick with this whole program of, of non-motorized and motorized. Don't do the Dale Pass, where certain zones, it gets too complicated. The Rabbit Air's approach, what we have here is amazing and reduces conflict, or, you know, like that.
Can I have one quick thing? In the year that we've been having these conversations with partnering agencies, we have never entertained the idea of turning the golf course into a functioning rental, um, opportunity. It is, it is fully intended to offer no competition for, for local businesses.
Loretta?
Um, yeah, I'm Lori Tenney.
Oh, Lori.
I wanted to add that I was part of the original group that did the grooming out of the golf course. And Smokey, I, I understand that it took some business away from town as far as rentals, but a lot of people, we had members, and the membership carried all of our costs, by the way, and we were able to groom daily. Um, we had a lot of people that really, really liked the golf course, all the way from the front range down to Salida, BB, all over. So a lot of people used it that weren't older or beginners, so. And they did ask, as Cheryl mentioned, where can we eat? And a lot of people stayed overnight. People from Salida literally stayed overnight here, I spoke with lots of people at that time. Um, if you're going to choose to, and I would be interested to know from Ty how that did affect his business those six, eight years that we were really operating out there, you should at least have a porta potty at the golf course also. Secondly, if you're gonna only maintain the Mineral Belt, you need to follow Dan's suggestion or something like it, so that bikers do not go down the groomed skate lane, and classic skiers have their space, and again, with walkers to stay where the bikes are. So if you're only gonna maintain one, that would be great to have the users educated and know where they need to be. And also, it needs to be groomed more consistently, and Eddie has a lot of responsibilities in this county, but we know people who have offered to volunteer to groom the Mineral Belt. Um, other people have actually offered to be hired, so. But we've had a lot of people wanna voluntarily groom the Mineral Belt consistently, and that's what it really needs.
I'm definitely in favor, I'm definitely in favor, like I said, of consistently grooming the Mineral Belt Trail, and I think that's the big key with the success of the Mineral Belt Trail, right, is having it groomed consistently, you know, and focusing on that. It's like if the county is super bored after grooming all that consistently and does other stuff, you know, but to your point, it definitely affects our business, you know, when I have to compete, you know, I mean, I have to pay for the land, I have to pay the Forest Service, I gotta pay ski cooperatives, I gotta, you know, pay all these other entities to use the land, to groom the land. I don't get free land even, you know, so when you do use the golf course and it's, you know, the county's land, and then you're grooming it for profit, for a business through the county, it just, it is affecting me. I can't sit here and tell you exactly, you know, a dollar figure, but like I said, it was very apparent this year, when the county, when nobody was grooming the golf course, how many folks came up and got season passes from us again, and a lot of them I hadn't seen in a while, um, but they did come back and they got the season pass, and they, a lot of them get the season pass and then go to Fish Flats, the big flat area, which is much like the golf course, and they're able to park down there and they don't have to descend or climb back up to the Nordic Center. So we have a lot of users, um, that have similar terrain to the golf course, um, that we can sell passes to, and like I said, keep people employed, keep our business going, and it, without a doubt, it did affect us when the golf course had a Nordic Center, you know, and, um, like I said, to put an exact number on it, that's hard, but it is, and, you know, like I said, I'm in favor of the Mineral Belt Trail in town, and the more people that are Nordic skiing in Leadville, the better, like, I'm all for that, um, for sure, and I get that concept. But also, you know, I just want you to make sure that you're taking into consideration that I'm running a business, keeping people employed, and I have to pay a lot for the land and the equipment to groom it.
Right, thanks, Ty.
I have one for comment about the Nordic Pulse. Um, I have found it not updated, um, not user-friendly on the phone, and so I would love to see that be updated regularly if they do improve, and, um, hopefully it'll be a little easier.
I'd just like to echo what Ty said, we've passed as a Nordic Center for years and years and years, and we skied at the golf course, and we skied up there. I have not seen as many people skiing at Tennessee Pass Nordic in prior years as I have this year. I mean, there, it's been hard to find a place to park because there's so many people that are skiing, so. I, I saw the difference too, Ty, you're, you're absolutely right, the golf course did impact you, and a lot of the people we used to always see at the golf course, we saw at Fish Flats.
Thank you, John.
Um, yeah, I don't think that doing a half-hearted job at two different venues serves anybody very well. I've been here long enough to see the golf course fail as a Nordic Center three times. And without the clubhouse, I think it's lacking most of what it needs to cater to beginners. You're gonna need to go inside more often, perhaps, not put as many miles in. I think the Mineral Belt and Fish Flats can both serve beginners. We're gonna get a special type of beginner here anyway, because we're at ten thousand feet. So there are a lot of people who are gonna do their beginner skiing at Gold Run or the Dale Golf Course. We've gone from grooming the Mineral Belt and College Trails three times a week, to twice a week, to once a week. This year, I've counted eight grooming missions in fourteen weeks, including our community blowing off the first month of the season. Neither the College Trails nor the Mineral Belt were rolled or groomed in time. And a problem that I think would be the first thing to try to fix, the Timberline Nordic Trails at CMC are thirty-seven years old. I've got the original memo of understanding typed up by Don Quinn that resulted in the creation of that, built by skiers for skiers as the community's Nordic Center. The Mineral Belt is twenty-seven years old. Because of our circumstances, we have never, well, very, very seldom, enjoyed weekend and holiday grooming. I can count four hundred weekends and holidays when our trails should have been groomed and weren't. So to spread ourselves too thin doesn't make sense, to do our very best with the Mineral Belt Trail, considering that at the grand opening, we, the Mineral Belt Committee, promised an immaculately groomed trail from Thanksgiving to Easter. That promise has never been kept. It's been a crapshoot. I have a lot of friends in Chaffee County who literally refer to it as the Leadville crapshoot. This is their place to ski, but they come up not knowing what they're gonna get. Could be glorious, could be garbage. We have signed on to the Nordic Pulse app too soon. We have the cart before the horse. Without a professional grooming program, all that's happening on Nordic Pulse is we're revealing now to the world that we seldom groom our trails. It's very revealing. Um, we were better off keeping our negligence a secret. And the other problem with Nordic Pulse right now is that you've got a mix of, you've got some names wrong. There's nothing named Student Lab Trails, those are the Timberline Nordic Ski Trails, created by Don Quinn, Pete Stegle, Jim Feistner, Greg and Higginson, primarily. Our community's Nordic Ski Center, the Timberline Nordic Ski Trails. We also have the, we also have the Timberline Single Tracks. Right now, that's all laid on one map, so we're not differentiating single-track grooming from wide-track grooming. And anybody looking at the map of the Wheeler's Trails is just gonna go, whoa, this is an over-stimulated child who went nuts on an Anchis catch. You need to enlarge that enough to at least see the separation of the trails as they wind around. Nordic Pulse is a great resource, and all the real guys use it. But go to the sites of Metow Trails in Washington, Grand Mesa Nordic Council, Western Slope, numerous others, Crosscut in Bozeman, Montana, they're all on Nordic Pulse. And the reason it works is because they have updates to provide. I looked this morning, and apparently the golf course just got some grooming, Mineral Belt hasn't been groomed in ten or twelve days. When people see that, we're gonna be repelling more people than we attract. So I have a sustainable, comprehensive grooming program in mind for the Mineral Belt Trail. I don't know if there's time to quickly describe it or not, but you guys tell me.
We got fifty minutes, go ahead.
Can we just, can we just?
Don't take the whole fifty minutes.
No, we'll take like five.
I appreciate everything you just said, I just wanna make sure that you did hear what Jane said, that CMC can't label those as Timberline for legal reasons.
I've been investigating it, there was some talk years ago of not wanting to promote it as an actual center due to the fact that then you take on the liability of operating against it for sort of. And so there was an intentional effort before my leadership there to not promote it as a Nordic Center. I, um, you know, I'm a little backwards, we don't have signage, we don't label trails black to green, and that was intentional. There has, I've investigated a little more, like current insurance, and there's been some chat, chat that maybe that was an over, overly cautious approach. Um, but in a litigious society, next to a tubby hill that's used for decision-making, um, the college, the college has, you know, kind of refrained from trying to overly promote it, because the primary use of the college trail is teaching students to read. Right, I think everyone knows that.
I just wanted to make sure that was clear, because it sounded like there was.
Yeah, there's some, we could continue investigating that, I think, over the course of next year, but we have intentionally not promoted it as a Nordic Center, as more of a side benefit for the community. And we've tried to work with Jane to make it as good as possible, and I gave the feedback, you know, from the state champion girls routine, is that it was quite better.
Right, which is why it's called CMC Lab Trails. That's where we're at right now, even if it changes over.
Who, uh, who ensures the Wheelers grooming activities on College Park?
The Wheelers.
The Wheelers?
Wheelers do, and we have an MOU with that.
Yeah, so if a group were set up to run in parallel to the Wheelers, it's conceivable that we groom the hell out of the Mineral Belt Trail and do all the supplemental grooming needed at the college as well. Because for one thing, if you're training snowcat drivers, and they go out into the real world, chances are they're not gonna be grooming something that's been neglected, like our trails often are. They're gonna be grooming something that's being groomed daily.
No, I would simply disagree. The grooming that we do at the college is appropriate for the industry. I don't think people fully appreciated how low the snow here was to start out with, and how little snow we had, and how rocky the college trails are. You know, we have, uh, two professors that are sort of experts in snow science, and they decide when we start grooming, when we start grooming. Um, and so I think that, you know, in terms of like grooming the college trails more, I would argue that we actually do not want to groom them anymore than we do, because it's just over groomed. You're dumb. Don's having those shows on there.
I'd like to keep up with him and saying that every time I've seen the college out on the computer, I've gone out all the way up to the time I blew the tire. I was, I was day for day with them, so, um, as in seeing the trail in bad shape, the only time I see that trail's in bad shape is when there's too many walkers, too many dogs, and a driver who drive on it, so, um, I disagree with being in bad shape. With snow load, I, any machine on it, loose and break the top crust, we'll be looking like, uh, town is. Town right now is ready to melt out, just because their crust is still, uh, broke on that area every day. We go out and break the crust, even with a light machine, you'll lose it.
Well, I think the snow year's been pretty average. If, if we can't do it on an average year, then we're, you know, the January will melt ass.
We've had a very light season, but Sterling and I weren't able to get out and set initial prep out at the golf course, even at his trails, until December, December. I mean, we had a little bit of a dump in early December that gave us some advantage. Um, we had nothing for Thanksgiving, so there was nothing for us to ride over, and then for three weeks, we had nothing in December. We weren't able to groom again, um, and get out there until just around Christmas. And then it was the same story in January, and it's been the same story this month, too. So, you know, when we're seeing fourteen, fifteen days between grooms, it's exactly what Eddie's talking about, you know, we really have to preserve the snow we do have, because we don't have man-made snow, this is the other piece. You know, a lot of our neighboring paid Nordic facilities, Brad Frisco, Ty even, like, they're, they're blowing snow, they're making man-made snow. Um, and so, and, and maybe I'm just speaking about Ty's operation, but. Ty blows snow?
No, I don't go.
Okay. Cooper does, my apologies. Um, but a lot of our neighboring Nordic facilities are able to do that, and so the way that snow functions in conjunction with use and machinery is really different than the natural rhythm.
Yeah, I think it's hard to get an idea of what the conditions are like out there based on snow numbers and state average snowpack numbers, things of that nature. That's why there's a whole snow science, you know, program, because what happens when there's asphalt under a snowpack is a lot different than dirt and rocks, and there's a million variables involved.
Gosh, and dog poop is a huge problem, it does actually melt the snow.
It's not the wax, no, it's the trees.
Not only is it an eyesore, but it does melt our snow faster.
So I'll just throw in like a high-level thing, like, for our club, we learned to do one thing and do it really well. So we switched years ago to one cat, one trailhead, same operator, and that changed everything, right, for us. Um, next thing is education, like, I can't say enough, if it would be great if we could have one QR code for the whole county that would take you somewhere and you could select what happened. So if you went to the Nordic Center, it would say, oh, this isn't, instead of just saying this is not for me, I can't pick my dog out here, it tells you the option where to go right away. It covers everybody, treats everybody fairly. I think the education thing is a big deal, it should be made, it should be obvious, it is an investment. This is kinda like when you look at the Mineral Belt Trail and all those signs there, you just every year add that QR code to more, for people to access those locations. Um, and I've learned, too, that not everybody can operate a snowcat. I mean, we went through that, too, where people were like totally tired of volunteering for the club. We tried and it didn't work, it was counterproductive on the equipment and the trail, we'd invested our time in the people that usually are best operator, that were converting into snowcats, had run road graders, bulldozers, some kind of joystick, operational machinery. Um, and that's just kinda my high overview in, in the education thing, you can always update, you put the one QR code somewhere, but you can always update the website. I don't think that's ever a bad investment in education, when you give the people the opportunity to go somewhere else to do the right thing in the county.
So that's a good idea. If I could just, uh, interject, I think we have a fundamental disagreement about the snow science, and Dan, are you here? Dan, between us? I'd like you to speak on how often you could groom at the golf course and, and why your grooming was so great when you were there. I, I guess I don't understand, and, and I'd like you to, to give us a counterpoint, please.
The industry standard for cross-country ski grooming is to groom every single day. The three places in, in Summit County groom every day, they don't wear out their snow. The number one thing the trails need to change in Leadville to make them groom better with less snow is to buff them out and make them smooth. And you need to cut the trees back so the snow hits the trail, get the hot tree trunks away from the trails, and then you'll be able to successfully groom on much less snow. This year was definitely a nice, average snow year, it started early. Any year that I was in charge of the golf course trails, we would have had great skiing over Thanksgiving. You need to match the machine you're using, of course, with the amount of snow you have. You can't run a giant snowcat on the golf course with a tiller on four inches of snow, but you can surely start very early in the year at the golf course with a roller and a snowmobile and keep the snow from blowing away, and mark the trails in the fall so you know where you're going. Anybody who's. anybody who says that there's insufficient snow at the golf course is wrong because they've abandoned the snow shoveling program we did down there, which, which made it a completely reasonable thing to groom in low snow conditions. Like, crazy, cutting the trees along the Mineral Belt Trail, cutting trees at the college, cutting trees on Mount Massive Golf Course woodsy trails, and cutting the trees along the abandoned, the abandoned Links to Lake Trail, for whatever reason I can't possibly understand. That's the key to making it better and to smooth the trails out. The places that groom early, I'm here in West Yellowstone right now where they groom every day. They groom with a big snowcat, they groom early, they groom often, and it's a tremendous economic driver to this town, cross-country ski trail grooming. And there you go, we have plenty of snow this year. Anything, anybody who's saying we didn't, they're making excuses for the lack of maintenance on our trails.
Thank you, Dan. You're, uh, you always did a great job grooming, we appreciated that. Uh, I think Bill has a grooming plan he'd like to run through real quick.
Ken, go.
I just have one quick thing.
Yeah.
I'm not gonna get into a low snow year, great snow year, low temperatures, high temperatures. You know, um, I'd be curious if anybody agrees with me from the college, or Sterling, or Ty. But I know what really, really helps our grooming situation, and there's a nice safety factor to it is, is grooming late as possible in the evening. Because the trail will set up thermal cooling on a, on no cloud nights. My, my opinion on my grooming is to make that trail last as long as possible for no matter how high usage or low usage, I want those snowmobiles to put their ice scratchers down. But you only get that, you only get that through the night. So if you groom in the day, it's gonna be soft all day, there's no, it never sets up. And what have you, and if you ever walk behind your snowcat grooming in the middle of the night, like I do, just to check something, it's amazing even when I walk behind a massive cat, and I sink, like last night, I sunk up to almost my knee. But by this morning, I guarantee you, I could walk on that, fat bike on that, or whatever. So, I, I just, I just think that, that, that's a, that's a really big perk to grooming later in the evening, like, or early evening, you let it set up, and it is nice, there's a nice safety component to that, that you don't encounter anybody.
Grooming for us, yeah, so...
Sorry, go ahead.
Grooming for us, um, happens almost every day. Um, but there are days when we do have to be careful. This last warm spell, you're like, okay, we stayed off it for a couple days because we just start, you know, going down too much, or just, it's too hard, it's too fast, you know, that sort of thing. But I think definitely being able to groom more consistently, it's definitely not detrimental to the snowpack. We've always had, you know, good success, and, you know, we get a lot of traffic with the cookhouse and that sort of stuff. So we do, we do groom, you know, those five, six days a week and don't have any trouble.
Thank you, Ty. I would like to let Bill just finish his, his five minute.
Yeah, so, real, real quickly, I mentioned the lack of weekend and holiday grooming. In this past season, Thanksgiving was a great example of that. We got a big storm right before the four-day Thanksgiving weekend. We had a beautiful Bluebird weekend and the trails were untouched. Now we need to begin to roll these trails as soon as we get snow. We don't just do it once and wait for another big storm. The reason for rolling the trails to start the season is to get the season going as early as possible. What you're doing is prepping a base for your grooming machinery. That could be a snowcat, it could be lighter machines. But you're prepping a base for your machinery to take to the trails. What you're also doing is you're prepping that base to withstand warm sunny spells. Because you're knocking the insulation out of the snow, you're helping the ground freeze deeper, colder, sooner, eliminating the sublimation of the snow that just sits there. So it'll turn to what's called TG, Temperature Gradient Snow, sugar. When that snow is new, the crystals are sharp, you can compress it and it bonds well. The longer it sits there, the temperature gradient between the warm freezing ground and the cold white air is transferring warmth and moisture through the snowpack, turning it into ball bearings, or sugar. It gets very hard to manage then. So, rolling to kick off the season. Then my program would work pretty simply. Seventeen years ago, two hundred of us enthusiasts bought the county a snowcat. That yellow Bombardier, we paid sixty percent of the cost of that with money that we raised. Our goal of weekend and holiday grooming was never achieved, and the grooming has diminished. So to bring it back and make Nordic Pulse worth being on, we would plan thirty trips a year with the snowcat. We set aside eight thousand dollars for the maintenance, repair, and fuel of the cat. The thirty trips would break up like this. We would plan, let's say, to groom with the cat Friday nights, the entire Mineral Belt. Set a new classic track, whole shebang. Saturday, all the users are out there on the trail. By Saturday evening, the main platform of the trail is all buggered up because we got foot soldiers, bikers, and skiers, and pets. The classic track typically will last the week under normal conditions. The other nine feet of that platform is what we want to refresh daily. My plan for doing it, it just got harder thanks to Trump, but there's a snowmobile called the Tiger Nomad, made in Quebec. Twenty-two thousand dollars is what it would cost us, maybe thirty now with Trump's tariffs, but we could, we could buy one in the gap between his tariff games, get one here. This is a ten-foot-long, five-hundred-pound machine with a hundred and twenty horsepower. It can tow eleven hundred pounds. So picture this, the cat goes out on Friday night and does the whole trail. I sign up to be Nomad Pilot Number One. So I go out on that buggered-up platform Saturday night at dark to a little shed at Dutch Henry, I pull out this electric machine with the implement it's pulling. I take it around to the animal shelter, and I've just refreshed the damaged part of that surface, so it's good again for tomorrow. I put the machine in a little shed at that end, which also has the charger adjacent to all the county's solar panels. And what I pull out of the shed then is an electric fat bike to ride back down to the vehicle I parked at Dutch Henry. Nomad Pilot Number Two goes out to refresh the buggered-up trail Sunday night. They meet the machine at that end, the animal shelter. They groom back around to Dutch Henry, park the machine, ride that e-bike back to their vehicle, and we have a simple crisscrossing of machinery like this happening nightly. So I would plan on thirty snowcat missions in the winter, ninety missions with the Nomad. In our twenty-week season, that's a hundred and twenty missions, and that's realistic because Mother Nature is gonna intervene. So the cat goes typically Friday night. We have ten more incidental missions planned for the cat to go when it's needed. Midweek storm, big wind event. We use the lighter machine, and the Tiger Nomad is a, is a dream. Clean, quiet, electric snowmobile with heated hand grips, and it would attract people willing to do their nightly shift. I have no interest in driving a noisy, stinky snowmobile. I've made dust and noise all my life at work, and the electric snowmobile is something I volunteer to drive. Um, I could get us the electric fat bike if we put the rest of this program together. So then the pilot has no worries about getting back to their vehicle, and nor are we worried about doing the section through town, which has eight crossings in a mile, eight over crossings. So we, we do the skiable portion of the trail nightly. Dutch Henry to Animal Shelter, Animal Shelter to Dutch Henry, switching places, the groomer and the fat bike escape vehicle. We could launch this yet this year with the UTV that's at the golf course and practice this and see if this is a valid technique. The Tiger Nomad will tow eleven hundred pounds. The Ginsy groomer, a Tic Tac full-size eight-foot groomer, is gonna be five, six hundred pounds. And we're just doing a refresh of a trail that's primarily groomed by a snowcat. And that refresh is easy enough on the machine. You might be adding a hundred, a hundred and fifty pounds of drag when you're grooming with it. So you're asking the machine to pull seven hundred panels when it's rated to eleven. Fewer moving parts, much less maintenance with this electric machine. And it would take us from being behind to a little ways out ahead. People might start to copy our program if it works, but if we don't experiment with it, we won't know. And a UTV could substitute for the electric snowmobile for now, or for a season or two, whatever. Um, but then what we're doing is we're providing the same product every morning. Then it makes sense to be on Nordic Pulse. Then we'll start to bring back a lot of the customers we've lost. Because I can tell you, I've skied, Dan's up at West Yellowstone, I was there last year. I was also in Deton Valley, Crosscut in Bozeman. The year before that, I was in the Metow Valley in Washington. Go to these world-class Nordic centers and you will see professionalism and you'll feel the vibe. People trust that their trails are groomed. Right now, people don't trust Leadville. Look at the Nordic Pulse and you'll see why. When did we ask grooming?
Bill, just a query, are, are those places managed by nonprofits? Are they managed by municipalities, private, are they?
Hmm, it's a bit of both. So, Pinedale, Wyoming, uh, was an interesting one, it's Sublet County, Wyoming. They groom a huge, wonderful Nordic center, which is beside their little Cooper-like area at White Island.
Yeah, yeah.
Sublet County lodging tax pays for their grooming. They run a full-size cat on their trails three times a week.
Mm-hmm.
Part of the system allows dogs, and a big part of the system doesn't.
Yeah.
On the Mineral Belt, for instance, if it were just skiers, we could groom twice a week typically, and it'd be awesome. But the foot soldiers and fat bikers have an enormous impact. And so we need to do more grooming perhaps than we're comfortable doing.
So this, this isn't swimming in my lane, right? Because this doesn't involve the High Riders Snowmobility Club whatsoever. Not going too far in the past. One commissioner just made a good point, apples to apples, right? So we're a little unique because of all the variables in the situation. Looking a little bit in the history, we had, we had, um, mountain stakes snowcats. Even the Snowmobility Club groomed the Mineral Belt one year. Now we have the county doing it. I do feel like there is some benefit to having, anytime you can give volunteer hours, or anybody willing to do something, you see what partnerships you can build in the community and possibly, I, I do see some benefit to them taking it over the top of what the county can provide. I, I'm, I'm, I'm kind of believing that. Um, so those are like just two comments that I look at what we've been through in the past and what, what somebody's operated, and I usually jump on that opportunity. Um, but there's some kind of investment there, but...
Yeah, I like that.
Yeah, so, um, so wrap this up. We would be grooming almost nightly. We could be doing the majority of it with a solar-powered electric machine that can do the lighter work. When you try to tow a full-size Ginsy groomer through the snow after a big storm, you almost need a snowcat, so that's what you might as well use.
You absolutely need a snowcat, we stopped it yesterday. It's out and it's fine, but, yeah.
Yeah, so when you are just doing a nightly refresh, because we've always said that the Mineral Belt is multi-use and free. I think both those terms are incorrect. Multi-use is typically recognized as motorized and non-motorized uses. What we have is multi-sport use. And we should say, there is no charge to use it, but nor is it free either. The more that people contribute, the better job we can do. So for instance, I wouldn't rely on volunteers. Leadville has burned out enough volunteers to populate Puerto Rico. Um, to pay people instead, to compensate people. When you compensate people, you increase the commitment level, the competence, and the capability. So, I'd propose, give the cat driver for the thirty annual missions in the cat, eighty bucks a trip. How long's it take, Eddie, three hours?
I'd do it all, all of it without connecting the dots is three hours.
Yeah, so...
But right now, my three hours is connecting the dots.
Yeah, so let, let's say, we compensate the cat driver eighty bucks permission. Then we're sending them thirty times a year, that's twenty-four hundred. The Nomad Pilots are gonna be able to go twice as fast. You could easily do that ten-mile stretch in seventy-five minutes. So you're going two and a half, three times the speed of the cat. You're not raging like Speed Racer out there, but you are going pretty quickly around the trail pulling a smaller implement with this high-powered electric machine, or with a UTV to start. Folks doing the nightly refresh could be compensated forty bucks. Times ninety is thirty-six hundred, so now we're at six thousand. I think with a bunch of people being offered a side hustle instead of asked to volunteer, we get plenty of people who would want to be a part of this. And we could probably compensate them through ten ninety-nines. And then we're insuring their activities too, which is thousands more. But still, if we were to take forty thousand of the Mineral Belt's hundred twenty that they're sitting on, we could get this up and going almost immediately. And it would change everything. Because the Mineral Belt Committee has broken a promise to us for twenty-two years running. And that is that the proceeds from the LOPA are going to maintenance and improvements of the trail. We don't see a maintained and improved trail. We see a group hoarding the money while the trail languishes, and it's wrong. I, I'd call it fraud, in fact, because hundreds of those dollars came out of my pocket. And I believe, like everyone else did, that the money would be utilized for the trail. What is the Mineral Belt Committee's only annual effort? It's a ski race. So when you're accepting hundreds of thousands of dollars from skiers, it should occur to you some year to return value to skiers. So let's put that money to use. I've seen it move sideways from the Mineral Belt Trail to PLCR. Apparently now it's sitting in LCCF. This money should've been getting used along the way. People come and they don't see the improvements that were promised. They don't see a LOPA that's growing, they don't see any other events. And we have some imbalances to cure here. The Wheelers are doing great, multiple annual winter events. We don't have any snowshoe races anymore, and we have one ski race. At the very least, the LOPA should be split. One weekend you hold a five and ten day and you try to bring three hundred people in, because it's a fundraiser. On a different weekend, you have the half marathon and marathon, try to bring three hundred people in.
That's a good idea, Bill.
Um...
Let's let a couple other people talk, because we're, we're starting to run low, but, uh, if you, is that written down there? Do you wanna, let, let's, um...
I got various things in here. One of these that you might find interesting came from a former commissioner spending our tax dollars saying that we were...
Can you repeat it?
Colorado Cycling and Nordic Skiing Mecca. So this commissioner has since left town, but talking it isn't the same as walking it.
Right.
And we never have.
Mabel, do you have something to say?
Yeah, um, the one thing people really don't realize, and I mean, trails are marked that they're non-motorized, but we have them constantly driving down the road.
Yeah.
Getting it stuck, tearing it up. We got a newer subdivision, that thing, that that's their private driveway. They're parking on it, they're shoveling it, and we can't keep snow on it.
What section is that?
Is that the rail yard?
Oh, the rail yard.
Mm-hmm.
That's why the older got put there, because they're gonna use it for a driveway too. They put their asphalt right through like that.
And then they go right across the street, we love Leadville, everybody stops there and takes some picture with their cars.
Yeah.
I mean, we can't keep snow on trails when people keep driving on it.
Mm-hmm.
They do it up at drip points, and the snowcat has to pull them out because they think they can go over the berm.
Sure.
Mm-hmm, yeah, yeah.
And they can get the haggar in there.
I know, but there's some...
Well, you have a set deck, Ed. Skirn, Skirn, you haven't heard from you? Scott, you haven't heard from you yet, go ahead.
These are all great examples and I think, you know, Bill's definitely on to something as far as more of an action item plan for helping keep the Mineral Belt Trail up as good as it could be. I groomed the Mineral Belt Trail as a volunteer for over five years. I also groomed on Christmas Day a couple of years. And it takes a lot to do that. Eddie's doing a great job, or he does a great job as a groomer. At the same time, if the county wants to step up as their grooming operations, they shouldn't rely on somebody whose priority is keeping our streets clear. And I'm not throwing you under the bus.
It's mostly stuck in the snow anyways.
Yeah, so that's kind of an easy thing to do. At the same time, a lot of these examples that we're mentioning, Frisco Nordic Center, three hundred bucks a year. Ty's is a hundred twenty-five bucks a year for a ski pass. Metau Valley, three hundred twenty-five, or three hundred forty-nine dollars, or four hundred twenty-five dollars. So you kind of like, as just throwing it out there, you get what you pay for. We're complaining about something that we get for free. It costs the Wheelers, you know, close to five thousand dollars a year to groom all these trails that we try very hard to keep up. You know, if we didn't groom twenty miles of trail as much as we do, all those potential users would be on the Mineral Belt Trail, making it potentially even worse, you know, it's opinions. We've come a long way and I think, like, there's plenty of room to improve upon. We just have to, you know, realize, like, it's gonna cost. If we really want to step up, it's gonna cost money. And where is that money gonna come from?
We know that, and I think the argument of it's free, it shouldn't, you know, it could be crap because it's free. That, I don't agree with that.
And I'm not saying it should be.
I'm just saying, I've heard that before, like, hey, it's free, like, big deal, let it go to shit. So I just want to state for the record, I do not agree. And if the county needs to step up, do we have QR codes out on that trail where tourists can come? And I guess if they're there, I've never seen them, I guess I haven't been out in a while. But, you know, there should be QR codes and we should be able to sustain it. So I just want to disagree with you a little bit on that, Stephen, that because it's free, it can't be good.
Oh, yeah, I'm not, I'm not trying to argue that it's free.
Sure, and we're discussing, we're not arguing. We're not complaining either, we're having a discussion.
As far as equipment goes, the county roller, or the CMC roller that we use, the Wheelers use it, the county uses it, the CMC uses it. We need a new roller, period. That's one of the first things you should put on the list as far as, you know, a three thousand dollar roller that could potentially use as a refresh implement as well. Like, that's the first thing the county needs to buy, is a refresh.
What's wrong with the old one?
It's janky, yes.
So it's being shared by how many different groups?
At least, at least three to four different groups. And it's a vital piece of machinery that we've ever seen prior.
Just the last bit about this grooming concept I have. I mentioned compensating people instead of expecting everything to be a volunteer effort. Plenty of money from the Mineral Belt Trail, raised primarily from skiers, that could be put to use right away. The purchases I mentioned, the maintenance funds mentioned, compensation to the operators. And then in the middle, say we launched this. Middle of next year, the world sees a dramatic difference. Geez, must be under new management. All these trails are groomed nightly now. Halfway through that season, we would want to then announce what our budget is for the next year. So just as a ballpark, let me say forty-five thousand dollars. That is not the cost of grooming when we use this efficient machine most nights. That is the cost of the grooming plus a fund that's gonna replace implements as needed. So say it's forty-five thousand dollars. Then we come out and say, we know what the Mineral Belt is used for. So we are expecting a third of this money to be raised by the foot soldiers, which is my term for the hikers, runners, walkers and snowshoers. Foot soldiers come up with a third of that money. And the bikers come up with a third of that money. And the skiers come up with a third of that money. And now we have this thing sustainable.
How's that through the QR code?
Part of it, but also, we could make a couple of moves that would reduce that amount for each of the user groups. Additional events. I have one in mind that would involve all three user groups up on the east side. So that these three sibling user groups could all race together and party together. They'd each be in their own category. But we would have runners, bikers, skiers on the same racecourse on the same day, pure fundraiser to cover this room. There's also another way to raise thousands very easily. And I spoke to a commissioner about this five years ago, and unfortunately, there was no follow-up. And this has cost us now thirty thousand and counting. But we have fifty thousand dollars worth of kiosks out on the trail. The doubles cost eight grand, the single ones were fifty-five hundred. There are three doubles on the Mineral Belt, another one at the community park, and there are three singles on the Mineral Belt. Some need to be relocated, because we didn't know when we installed them, where the users would gravitate to, but now we know. They all need to be perpendicular to the trail, some of them are, some apparently. Meantime, twenty-two signboards under those kiosks, three feet by four feet. Six of them have never had any content. We could be selling this as sponsor space. People who see how glorious the Mineral Belt is, companies like Solomon, what's a thousand bucks to them? So if we take, say, six of these panels, we play musical chairs with the kiosks and the panels. All the information text that's on them already can stay. We move some things around. Then at six trailheads, we're offering a sign panel that has ten sponsor spaces and then a QR code and info on the community in the middle of it. Those would be the size of a record album, about twelve by twelve inches. Six placements for a thousand bucks a year. We can find ten sponsors to do that. That grosses ten thousand, just from the passive use of the kiosks, optimizing.
Chris, is the county legally allowed to sell advertising space, like, on the sides of those little structures and stuff that were donated by Smith Lumber all along the Mineral Belt, things like that?
Well, and it was my impression that all that kind of signage and stuff was part of what the Mineral Belt Committee did.
Yeah.
So it would be them essentially supporting space, not the county.
The bylaws prevent us from charging for the Mineral Belt Trail use.
But that wasn't mentioned.
Beyond that, the rules get a little slack. There's nothing that says we can't ask for money. Like TV Tap is one great example. It's the Teton Valley Trails and Pathways Group. So they're based in Driggs, Idaho, and they groom six different areas on the west side of the Tetons. No specific charge, but they sell a bumper sticker for seventy-five bucks that says, "Teton Valley Trails and Pathways Official Support Vehicle." They get a lot of people buying those. So you're not forced to pay to use the trail. But also, we don't market it as free. We ask people to support what's gonna become an increasingly costly effort.
One, I wanted to bet you, I hate to put you on the spot, but do I call, recall correctly that the golf course could also, like, sell sponsors for the benches or something, have their signs out there? So we have, I think, a present.
They provide the benches.
Yeah, and so as part of the sponsorship.
So they want to put their sign on.
Yeah, yeah, so that's kind of the other thing too, is you could get the sponsors to provide the signs.
Yeah, the Mineral Belt already sold numerous plaques. Memorial plaques and other, like, family name recognition plaques that are up on their shelters. So there's a way to do it. And what we do also is, right now, a lot of us, we use the Mineral Belt, but we don't feel fully connected to it. The Mineral Belt Trail Committee has been aloof and secretive and deceitful. And it's not working for us. They don't know what purpose they serve, honestly.
Well, I think there's some changes there. I don't know if anybody here wants to speak to that.
I think you have a Mineral Belt Trail Committee member here who might.
Smokey, do you feel comfortable?
Sure, I'm on the spot, but. I've been on it for two years. And I've just been kind of warming my feet up to what's happening and moving along. So basically, my focus has been the LOPA and dialing in issues that we've had in the past, because I don't feel like we can move forward and get more people, more participants, until we actually have a well-run event. So that's been my focus. A lot of these issues, like sponsorships, I've brought up in the past about, you know, selling sponsorships on the kiosk. It just met with some resistance, you know, it just wasn't something they felt like doing at the time. And I kind of feel like, um, there's definitely a number of things that we could be doing better. And we're slowly working on them. One is actually using the money from the LOPA that was raised by skiers for the trail. And the maintenance of the trail, not just signage, that kind of stuff. When I was on the rec board, I created the QR codes before it was only, you know, you only donate by mail and a check. And so we created these crappy little QR codes on tomato steaks. And we raised five thousand dollars just off those crappy QR codes. After that year, they were moved to signs in the kiosks, but they weren't very explicit. It was kind of like this pretty map with the little QR codes they donate to the trail. So in my opinion, it was relatively ineffective. But these are some of the issues that we're aware of and we're slowly working on. It is a pretty small committee right now. And we are going through some changes, so I think that's why we're here. And that's why we're listening and we are aware of a lot of these things, but, it's something that will take a little bit of time to change.
In summer, we get a lot of vandalism at the river, too. And so that cost us quite a bit of money to clean up.
Somebody threw out a really big number of a hundred twenty thousand dollars for grooming. And that's something on the volume of, like, grooming Val Pass's budget. Like, I don't, the transparency, it would help to show maybe what the previously played mountain states, which I think is a very expensive option. I'll find if you share what you pay to highlight your snowmobility club to groom.
I think the, Ross, I think the one twenty was what the Mineral Belt has in there. It has total, not what an annual cost.
It's what the Mineral Belt Committee has.
Has the group.
Has what has.
Just in their total fund.
Okay, because I was gonna say, wow, I mean, we should be having, like, a trail that looks like this, like, black gold. Okay, yes, okay, but I was gonna say, we should go back in the past and see really what we were spending.
Mountain states was charged us four hundred and twenty-nine dollars to do the Mineral Belt each time. Forty bucks a mile.
I don't want to, that's like a sore subject with me. Just the numbers and the cost and we don't, that's what we don't want to go back into. You already squashed what I was a little concerned about, is, are we spending a hundred twenty-five thousand a year? Okay, thanks.
Do you know what you can spend? Metau Trails in the North Cascades has two hundred kilometers that they groom. They're the biggest Nordic center in North America. They run five or six snowcats a night and their annual grooming budget is six hundred grand. That's what the biggest of the big guys do.
I don't think we need to come anywhere close to that.
No, can I? We don't need to.
Can I offer, so what I've heard, I really appreciate everybody's comments today and perspectives. I'm hearing a couple of things. Number one is that the overall grooming in the community is being managed by many people. And I think that we as a county government need to be careful about if there are certain users that we're raising above the others. Like, I just, I think it's really fair and I really appreciate Ross being here to talk about what it looks like to really focus or invest in a user group over another. And then I'm really curious what other communities have assets like ours that are government-run? Because I would like to get some information and wisdom from other places who have similar, like, some more apples to apples than, like, private or nonprofit-funded operations, since this has, since we have been getting, bringing more and more grooming into the county operations. And then it also seems important that, like, you know, as we are trying to be fiscally responsible as a board, we really have some clear options from staff that we can make some financial decisions about how much we, as a county, want to contribute and invest in this and where else we could be looking for help within the community to invest in this. Because I love grooming and I don't, I also, I don't want to overpromise if we're going to be having some budget shortfalls in the future. We can't, I feel like we might need to have more collaboration, knowing how important this is, not only to users and visitors, but our economic development. That's what I'm, that's what I've taken away from this meeting today.
There's one, there's one thing I want to add that Superboard should be aware of.
Yeah.
Everybody who years ago, twelve years ago, was worried about Wheelers, but it was tribal management at both of them, a lot of locations down across the mountains, White River, San Isabel, everything. We are directly impacted of what was gonna take place at Val Pass within two years. The seasonal workers are done, the national force is out of money. They're scaling back in two years, they're trying to fundraise. And when that product and quality goes down, they will be coming here and we will be having a higher volume of usage. And it's gonna be great for our business owners, but we should be, we should be thinking we're gonna might be overrun sooner than we thought. Because what is taking place over there?
Val Pass has a time limit on it now, what you're hearing?
Absolutely, I see that.
No range or something?
Yes, and that's why I'm trying to, I don't, I'm just saying, you know, we are impacted by other entities outside the county.
That's huge.
It's happening as we speak, and if you need any names and numbers, because I know we have relationships with San Isabel, but you should talk to the folks at, at White River, what's taking place there.
Buy some wind while you can, it's all for sale.
So in the interest of time, I think we can wrap it up and maybe, maybe I'll just kind of try and wrap it up and give my thoughts on it personally, and I'm not speaking for the board, but maybe if we can work with Smokey's budget and the county budget. And I'm gonna suggest that we let the golf course go this year and bring that machine up and help maybe implement bills or some version of bills.
Yeah, it starts as an experiment.
And just, just kind of let the golf course go, focus on the Mineral Belt Trail and not let it go forever, but make a better plan. Figure out the money part without using county money or loaning county money. Maybe try and help the Mineral Belt Trail Committee out with me as a member or, you know, anybody else and see how we can get this going. But, and thanks for, everybody for coming and keeping it cordial. And thank you, Jane, for the presentation. And thanks for all your efforts. We really do appreciate it. We know, I know it's been tough down there, so, thanks.
Is commenting available on the Zoom?
Commenting on the chat?
The chat section, yeah.
I saw, I think that should be made public.
It will.
It's, just in terms of the comments that, Dan, this is all we have.
And we're recording those?
Yeah, they are available.
Dan, we're reading your comments right now. We appreciate you coming in and taking time out of your ski day, but I don't know where it's gonna go from here, but I want to keep working on it and not let it go.
Is everyone in the room on some agreement that we can step up signage regarding, you know, the educational aspect? The foot soldiers versus the, you know, it seems like the lowest hanging fruit right off the bat.
The other thing I would suggest too is perhaps reaching out to your local nonprofit to see about collaborating on some few stations if they aren't available along the trails and stuff. available along the trails and stuff.
That's a great idea. Oh, do we know?
As long as they don't leave the bags out there.
Yeah, well, and that's how to say that, the data, because stations have to come with not just the bags, but the waste receptacle.
There's an innovative thing happening at Grand Mesa. They don't supply bags. What they have frequently along the trails are little garden shovels.
Yeah.
And they say if your dog poos out here, flick it way off the trail. It'll be gone a lot sooner than a turd in a bag would be, so.
Way easier than stick.
Yeah.
Yeah, and so buy a hundred bucks worth of garden shovels.
Mr. Quinn? Mr. Quinn? Let's close with.
Yeah.
As far as signage, and I've checked all of it, it's awesome. It's a lack of respect.
Yeah.
And it just scurrying on his, by the nine mark mark, it says no snow shoe or run on his bike trail, but yet it's okay to trash the Mineral Belt or the CMC.
It, it doesn't say that. It says, no, it encourages people to wear snowshoes on, on the trail.
Not to walk on the trails and, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, just on the education side of things, we've made a number of flyers that we've handed out to every business.
Also, the two resources that are closest to our.
Sure, you can have.
And they hand them out that talk about the exact, we're talking about in terms of where the skiers are supposed to go, where the bikers are supposed to go.
So what is Teton Valley Trails and Pathways?
Where Classic is supposed to go. Um, we do, there is, uh, we have, uh, in the new Leadville Twin Lakes Ride signage, we talk about it. Like we actually pepper people with information, um, and unfortunately, it's an enforcement issue.
Another would be, uh, White Pine, Pine D O L.
You know, there are dog poop stations out there. Um, but again, it's like, yeah, we could triple that stuff.
Yeah.
Sure, totally. But I think there is that, especially the stuff as benign to people as the dogs. And the walking is like, you know, I hate to say it, but the area that really gets trashed the most is the area in the neighborhoods. And it's ninety-five percent locals.
Yeah.
You know, so I don't know how we change the culture of that in terms of or toward, sort of signage is gonna tell people not to walk their dog through their neighborhood. That's their perception.
Just because.
Cause I, I've like engaged with quite a few people on this exact topic because
it, it does always come back to like respect and tourism and obviously I'm pretty aware of trying to and I mean, unleash that as possible.
Metao Trail.
It would be helpful if people kept their dogs on a leash. Yeah. Instead of running all over. But yeah, let's look at signage. We just did signage inventory this past year because we were placing all the interpretive signage. But we took pictures and inventory to every sign on the Mineral Belt Trail. And let's look at where it's gonna end with the sparring and that.
Yeah.
And happy to have visiting Leadville Twin Lakes by Susie's track.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm, especially in friends of Lake County, they do Leadville Twin Lakes track. It's like I am smashing people with information.
Yeah.
Once we're on the.
How do we get people to care?
Yeah, yeah.
Hey, let's, let's wrap it up. It's new. May we do another one of these tomorrow?
Stan's gonna school you.
Yeah.
My schedule is gonna be stolen.
Think we got some stuff to work on. Thank you guys.
Hey, thanks everyone for showing up. We appreciate everyone's thing, but, um, it is twelve votes GPM. We are going to end this work session in Lake County, Florida County Commissioners.